I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Alex?
Here.
Ms. Chinoweth?
Present.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Pat?
Present.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Whelan?
Miss Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterthwaite?
Here. Folks, this is a meeting that's being reconvened from last week, Monday, April 4th. So that agenda is available to you in the back of the room, I think, if there are enough copies for everyone. Is this Mike? Okay. This is the reconvened meeting from Monday, April 4th. We left a few items on the agenda tonight, which I'm sure most of you are aware of. We'll have first petitions and communications, all businesses listed, but there are no agenda items under it. Then the one item from the committee of the whole is the comprehensive plan. So we have first petitions and communications, and I have, oh, let's see, I have one to begin with here. Well, it was a proclamation for the Arts Council. Let me start with a couple others, and I'll run back upstairs and get that real quick. Bruce Larson and Vicki Mays from the Park District would come up, please, they want to talk about the comprehensive plan.
My name is Bruce Larson, I'm a commissioner of the Park District. With me is Vicki Mays, who is the director of the Urbana Park District. We'd like to make a few comments about the comprehensive plan relative to what it says about parks and recreation. We think the plan has done a very good job. We have no criticism of the plan as such. I would note that one of our commissioners, Nancy Del Coleman, from the Park District, served on the committee that worked on the comprehensive plan, and the things that we were concerned with did get incorporated. What I want specifically to talk about at this moment is Meadow Brook Park in South Urbana. The comprehensive plan on page 14 shows a map of this area, and shows the park, present park, Meadow Brook Park, expanding to the east in attractive land that's now owned by the university, the so-called Pomology property. Now, remember, this is on Windsor Road, we're talking south of Windsor Road, in the area between Ray Street and Philo Road. Currently, half of the distance is Meadow Brook Park, the other half was the Pomology part of the university that they, their plans show, well, be given up. The question is, on page 14, it shows expansion, and we've been asked, what do you mean by expansion? Could you elaborate a little on what you'd like to do in expanding the park? Well, I should first of all say, we'd like to have the whole tract. It's 160 acres, the present Meadow Brook Park is 130 acres, but it would be nice to have an entire park. This might not be realistic, so what is the highest priority, do we consider, of land we would like in that area? The highest priority is the land directly east of the Prairie Play area, that would give a buffer next to the Play area, buffered to whatever would be going in further to the east along Windsor Road. We also think we stand, as the Park District, in a unique position to utilize the interior lands of this tract to expand the trail system in Meadow Brook Park that has proven to be extraordinarily highly used and highly appreciated. And so this will answer, we think, what our high priority feelings are, but give you some idea of what that expansion could be. Vicki's going to talk some about the uniqueness of Meadow Brook Park, and why this should be considered for expansion.
Well, as Bruce, I would like to commend you on the comprehensive plan and the work you've done to bring citizens' ideas and input together, and also to commend you on the strong statement and value you place on open green space, parks, and trails. That's, of course, something that's very near and dear to our heart. Meadow Brook Park has been a remarkable asset to the community with use that has just stunned, I think, almost anyone who was initially a part of the concept of that, from families to children to adults, and all sorts of outdoor activities, both those that help us become healthy, and those that help us become appreciators of the world around us. And the contributions that that has made to the quality of life in our community. We want to, the Park District wants to let the city know and the residents of our community know that we are eager to help continue to develop that quality of life concept in whatever way we can. We would like to bring to your attention the collaborative planning that is being done right now at Weaver Park with the city and the county and many other local government entities, and want to stand ready to help in doing that kind of collaborative planning as well with Meadow Brook Park. So again, we commend your work, we want to encourage and endorse the plan as a whole, and specifically this concept, and let you know that we are ready and eager to help see that that comes to happen.
Okay, any questions? You ask, Ms. Chinoweth?
Just a quick question, since we're, you know, on the eve of passing the plan, is it, has there been discussion about this Pomology tract before today, and what has, or are you responding to seeing the map for the first time, or how is this coming about?
We have been eyeing that tract for many years, ever since the university announced its plans that they would be giving up that tract. So things move slowly over there, and we have to project into the future, or nothing will ever happen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
Well, currently, the text box, which covers part of that area, indicates that, merely that it's a plan, Pomology tract planned for future private development, and above it, against Windsor Road, it says mixed residential suburban pattern condos apartments. It doesn't sound like, right now, the text of that just area on the map reflects your interests of converting it into parkland. So you have a real problem with that, or?
Well, if you're talking about the whole 160 acres, however, the map on page 14 shows the expansion, and shows an arrow moving into that area. And we think, as I said before, we'd like it all, but we realize that the city has other priorities of residential areas and businesses and such, and that a plan will have to be worked out. And that's really the reason why I came here tonight, to say, what is our highest priority, as that is worked out? What do we think is the most important?
You're making sure that your foot's in the door.
That's exactly what we're doing. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And folks, before we get on with comments, other comments for the comprehensive plan, I do have a proclamation. Many of you know that the Boneyard Arts Festival is this weekend, and we have Jennifer Armstrong and Jenny Southlin representing 40 North and 88 West, and I'll let them say a few words if they'd like after I read the proclamation. It reads, this is a Champaign-Urbana proclamation, whereas arts, culture, and entertainment enrich the quality of life in Champaign County, and whereas multidisciplinary arts are supported and valued by the citizens of Champaign County, and whereas 40 North, 88 West was formed in 2002 to promote, support, and support art, culture, and entertainment, and whereas the cities of Champaign and Urbana have celebrated the arts and have focused attention on the value of arts in our lives, and whereas the annual Boneyards Arts Festival plays a vital role in bringing the arts and entertainment to our citizenry. Now, therefore, we, Mayor Schuyhearts, City of Champaign, and I, Todd Satterthwaite, Mayor of Urbana, do hereby declare April 15th and 16th, 2005, as Boneyard Arts Festival Weekend in the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois. So Jennifer and Jenny, we'll turn it over to you for comments.
Thank you, we just would like to invite everyone to participate this weekend. We have over 50 venues throughout our county participating, inviting artists into their spaces to share their creativity with you. Maps have been distributed through the News Gazette, you can get them in the hub this week, and...
Speak right in. Go ahead, speak right into the microphone there. You can take it out of the...
They wanted your wonderful comments.
We're just inviting everyone to participate this weekend. We have over 50 venues throughout our county, inviting artists into their spaces to share their creativity and talent with the entire community. Maps have been distributed in the News Gazette, you can get them in the hub this week, in the Accent, and they're available on our website at www.40north.org. And we've added a new component this week, which is the late night cabaret experience with jazz music and installation art, and a lot of exciting things to make up a happening, unique experience, and that's going to happen in downtown Urbana in the UC Center on Friday and Saturday evening from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And Jenny's the chair, and...
Yeah, we hope that all the citizens of Urbana come out to enjoy the cabaret. We intentionally brought the cabaret into Urbana to really create a dynamic scene for the event. The other component of this year's festival is our Be a Sunday Driver. We really want to encourage people to get to some of the other venues throughout the county, in Mohammed, Savoy, take a drive out to High Cross Studio, and Sunday is a perfect day to do that, so we've scheduled that extra day for this year's Boneyard. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Next, oh yeah, here, did you, Jennifer, did you want to take the proclamation? I'll get on with the other petitions and communications, and I'd like to remind folks that you have up to five minutes, but we do have a lot of people here tonight wanting to comment and so forth, so if you could keep your comments as brief as possible, and avoid repetition to the greatest degree possible. First, we have W. A. LaBerge, 2012 South Race, on the comprehensive plan in regards to Orchard Downs. Okay, does not want to speak, but wants to preserve the green space along Race Street. Elizabeth LaBerge, same, okay. Did you not want to speak either? Okay, same thing, okay, wants to preserve the green space along Race. Mary Angela Segre, 2010, Boudreaux.
Sitting here.
Okay, wants to preserve the green space on Race Street. Pat Johnson, 105 Meadow.
I'm not too shy, Steve.
All right.
I wanted to voice my concern about the Orchard Downs redevelopment plan. I live just east of Race Street on Meadow Drive, and we bought there about 20 years ago, mainly because of the quiet residential park-like atmosphere. There's a really nice green space that connects from Florida Avenue to Meadow Brook Park, and Meadow Brook Park is quite a resource. Once that area becomes a retail area with a 99-year lease, I don't know how we would ever get the green space back, at least I figured out I'll be 156 by then in my lifetime. There really is no need for a new retail area in the middle of a residential area in Urbana. I'd rather see the Philo Road Business District be used for that purpose. And I think surely if there's a retail business that could manage to survive in a residential area, it would thrive on Philo Road where there's a more major street and there's ample parking. That's all I need to say.
Okay, thank you. Next is Helane Silverman, 108 East Mumford, on Orchard Downs.
Over, over the weekend, I emailed the city council, my email bounced back from Danielle Chinoweth and from Mr. Hayes, and at that time, I was asking the city council to delay a vote on the comprehensive plan because of ambiguities in it. However, since that time, and in speaking to some of my neighbors, I can see the advantage to you taking a vote tonight in terms of the April 19th meeting with the university. That said, I think that it is vital to preserve that green space, and by green space, what I'm talking about, and if you agree to consider this, I think it needs to be made totally specific in the comprehensive plan. It isn't just the sidewalk that goes from Florida Avenue to Windsor, and it isn't just a strip of grass, it also includes the embankments, which today exist, because those embankments are what currently buffer us from the Orchard Downs graduate student residence. And that said too, I, like the neighbor who spoke before, want to continue questioning the wisdom of putting retail in our neighborhood. I do not see this as an amenity. If there were to be any retail at all, I am horrified at the article that came out in the, in the News Gazette that specifically targeted Race Street as the appropriate location for retail. If anything, it should be on Windsor. If we are forced to cope with retail, it should be very small, it should be like the Galleria that exists on Windsor. In Champaign, a little bakery, Mirabelle, that would be nice, something really small. But this is not what exists on the university website. On the university website, at www.uofpp.uillinois.edu docs, and there's other stuff, it's the website of Sasaki Associates. Sasaki did a study for the university, and it targets five areas that should be encouraged for commercial use, and it specifically targets Orchard Downs as a quote-unquote "lifestyle center retail," such as apparel, home furnishings, restaurants, books, gifts, gardening. I do not see how, with the exception maybe of a little bookshop, although we've got pages for all ages, which is just a five-minute drive, restaurants, it would be nice to have another little restaurant, but I really do not see how these can be considered neighborhood businesses, especially apparel, furnishings, gardening. Now, what is more alarming is that on that same university website, there is a report by Jones Lang LaSalle that is called Retail Assessment of the University of Illinois. Anybody can download it, and among its pages, it again targets Orchard Downs as one of the five key areas of development or redevelopment. It says of Orchard Downs that this is "one of the markets most appealing and affluent single-family home area." I do not see how destroying our neighborhood with massive retail, as contemplated on the university website, and as ambiguously made possible by the comprehensive plan's wording of neighborhood businesses, how this can be regarded as beneficial to us. Windsor Road will continue to be a major southern-east-west thoroughfare, and then here is the most important part of all. The concept of lifestyle center is defined in the Jones Lang LaSalle report, and it says that "we affluent consumers and upscale shoppers may get greater benefit from a better selection of apparel and household goods." Well, I can tell you that I do my shopping at Bloomingdale's and Nordstrom in Chicago. When I need pots and pans, if I'm not in Chicago, I go to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, and I am a relatively affluent shopper who would object strenuously to retail in my neighborhood. That is not why I moved to Urbana, but in case you do not know what a lifestyle center looks like, I would like you, after this meeting, or I'll pass it around to you now, but I'd like it back, I would like you to see what is being presented as a lifestyle center in Viera, Florida, and Peachtree City, Atlanta. It is huge, with 200,000 square feet, it has massive buildings, massive parking, and it requires the expansion of roads among the retail...
So, can you finish up, please?
I will, among the retail categories that it encompasses, apparel accessories, home furnishings, restaurants, book cards, gifts, gardening, hair salon, shoe repair, copying, mailing, Federal Express, Chico, Starbucks, et cetera, et cetera, and it requires the expansion of fringe arterials so that all roads will connect to the Orchard Downs commercial development. I think it really behooves you, the city council, to protect our residential neighborhood, our property tax value, and our lifestyle, and protect us in every way possible from what seems to be a very ill-conceived plan on the university, and for which the university never gives us the same story twice. Thank you very much.
Next is Jamie Yerry, 100 East McHenry, on Orchard Downs.
I checked that I was not going to speak, but I am in complete agreement with everything that Helane Silverman has just expressed.
Okay, thank you. Judith Bor, I don't know if I'm getting this right, 117 Whitehall Court.
That's me, and I want to agree with Helane and Pat Johnson, and I just take that if they develop something and it doesn't go, we have more vacant buildings like there are on Philo Road. That's what we don't need.
We're Lincoln's...
Thank you. Elaine Cohen, 203 East Holmes.
I also agree with everything that Helane has said, and that everyone else has, it's very vocal.
All right. Let's see, Matthew Tomazuski.
I agree with Helane.
Okay, doesn't wish to speak, but doesn't want the commercial development, and wants the green space. Amy as well.
Green space.
Okay. Diane Marlin, 2203 Boudreaux.
Well, I'm an upscale shopper who really misses Kmart and Martha Stewart. And I'm also here to say that I support amending the comprehensive plan to retain the existing greenways in Orchard Downs, specifically the multi-use path, mature trees, and green space along Race Street from Florida Avenue south to Windsor, and along Florida Avenue from Race West to Orchard. I think this amendment is important for several reasons. I appreciate Mr. Alex proposing it. It underscores the value that the city of Urbana and the residents place on the green areas in Orchard Downs, especially the multi-use path. Dozens and dozens of people use that path to get from parts of Central and East Urbana down to Meadow Brook Path Park, and to commute to and from work on campus, and I think it's a tremendous resource that we should, we should preserve in whatever happens in Orchard Downs. It also seems to me this amendment provides a framework that we will use from here on out, that the city planners and the university planners should use from here on out to guide their actions on that space. And third, it would also, by default, indicate that if there is going to be any commercial development, it should front on Windsor Road instead of Race Street or Florida. Windsor is going to be closer to the South Research Park, and more accessible to the people working, hundreds of people apparently, who are going to be working there. So if that's where it's going to, if there's going to be commercial or retail on a small scale, that's where it should be. This Orchard Downs development is supposed to benefit both the city of Urbana and the University of Illinois, and, and I think it will in the long run. I think we can really come up with something very, very high-quality there, but it's going to take the city, the university, and the people working together on this. I don't think it's something the university should go ahead and do on its own. They really need to bring along the city and the residents with them. And to that end, I think better communication from here on out is going to be the key. We haven't heard much of anything to this point possible, because there really wasn't anything to say, but I think now things are changing, and things are starting to happen. So to that end, the Southeast Urbana Neighborhood Association has established a list serve, and one of our goals is to improve communication and make it easier to communicate with residents. And I can, I forwarded you, I have forwarded the council, our address would be happy to provide that to any staff of the university, of the city, and hopefully they'll take advantage of it and use that as a means to communicate with residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Lois Steinberg, indicates she does not wish to speak, but wants to be on record as supporting striking High Cross Road from the plan, the intersection with I-74, and put it in at 1800 East, and also supports the amendment protecting green space at Orchard Walter Mansky, 202 East McHenry.
I can't get educated, and I guess I'm in the process of doing that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Jim Wood, 2024, South Race.
I think it ought to be very obvious to the city council by now that nobody in our area wants commercial development up and down Race Street. And I don't have much to add to what these others have already said, but a few little I think that if the development was something very important, like a Clark Lindsay Old Folks Home, or something of that order, that would not offend the people in the area, it would probably be suitable. And I'm also thinking that you're in a position now where the university wants a 99-year lease on this, and you have to decide what could happen, you know, long after the people on this council are gone, and other people in our area might be faced with a different city council, and a different university opinion, and what they might want in the future. And I'm thinking about the businesses over in the campus area that used to be restaurants, used to be fairly well-behaved, and they're now bars and nightclubs and virtually saloons. I'm also thinking about the fact that this city council has been very prone to allow gas stations to sell alcohol, and haven't heard anybody mentioning gas stations out there, but, you know, once the brick and mortar goes into place, and once the university gets the opportunity to develop this, who knows what they're going to suggest down the road. So I would just recommend that we make some kind of a plan that assures everyone in the area that the area's not going to be run down, and it's pretty obvious that commercial development is not going to do that. I don't know where the university plans to move all the residents that are in this Orchard Downs area now. I'm not aware of all the comments that have been made about it, and don't know what their plan really is, but I've heard they're talking about moving it out to Windsor Road somewhere. And commercial development along Windsor Road would be somewhat more logical, however, I'm not sure that that's even necessary. The university certainly has moved their hog farm operation way out south on Race Street, and they're probably thinking about the cattle barns and... and they're probably thinking about the cattle barns and the odor and the problems that it might cause in residential area. So we're all here kind of wanting to know what's on the minds of the university people that might want to use this property, especially along Race Street. It's obvious that they are looking for an income. And it's obvious to us that we've been supporting the university with our taxes for a long time. Obvious that a lot of the young students going from the families in Orchard Downs there, going to our public schools, have probably been funded by a lot of our taxes. So we're very concerned about this development and certainly want you to take very careful view of what the university is planning to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Marion Martin, 102 West Meadows.
Good evening. I'm ancient, and so I can go back in history about all this area. My husband and I came in 1940 as graduate students, and he eventually became Dean of Engineering Development and so forth. And so I'm going to skip a few thousand years, and Professor Stukel was at my husband's desk the day my husband died in 1984. And so we've known the Stukels well. Well, when something came up about them cutting down trees in the forestry, Nevada behind, well, west of what used to be McBride's Drug Store, and building, a great big building in addition to the child development, I'm all for child development, but there were plenty of vacant lots that the university could have used. I called Jim Stukel, I called Stanley Weaver, and a few others, and many people whom I know in Champaign County Development Council. And we got a group together, and we, lots of orange ribbons, and we got over there and we put, including Tom Burns, and we got, we put orange ribbons around those trees and we stopped that building. And Stukel took our side, and so had Stan Weaver, and we saved all those trees just south of Nevada Street, and the university-owned buildings there, and the dance studio and so forth. Well, I'll fast forward, and I think I've lived here long enough and old enough to know the past history. Nobody ever looks, in the university archives, Professor Burl, all that area was planted as, by the university forestry department. And Professor Burl said, never any cutting. Well, some, I don't know who they were, but they started cutting trees down in the university forestry. And again, I made a telephone call, and it's because I'm so ancient that I remember all this stuff, and saved a lot of that. And I'm very opposed to this because all that land is forestry land, and forestry is only just south of Windsor and Race. Those trees are ancient and beautiful, and the ones along Florida Avenue and South Race Street is inconceivable. I know Peter Fox, a developer, and he's going to hear from me too. It's just inconceivable. And I'm in.
Next is Robin Nieheiser at 109 West McHenry.
Hi, my name's Robin Nieheiser, and I do live on McHenry. And this whole situation, I've only lived here a year. We moved in a year ago, March, and we've done remodeling to our whole house. And all of a sudden, we hear of all this explosion of the university going to be doing this new stuff here. I'm not opposed to, you know, some retail coming in and some things happening, but when you're dealing with a residential area where we live and knowing the fact that, one of the most exciting things about this area that we live in is that it is family-oriented. It is all about family. People get out, they exercise. It is probably the most busiest area with people walking with their dogs, families walking together, riding bikes. Everything goes on in this neighborhood that I've never seen in any other neighborhood that I've lived in. I'm from Champaign. I've never lived in Urbana until we bought a house this last year. And the fact that this could happen and take out all this is just unreal. I have a daughter. She's one and a half years old. The most exciting thing to me is she's in a safe neighborhood. She's in a good neighborhood. And it makes me nervous of anything that could be so explosive that the university is going to bring in because of the foot traffic that can come through our neighborhood, because of the cars that could come through our neighborhood. I didn't spend the amount of money on a house that I did, being a young person, to have things like this happen that I had no idea that could go on. I don't understand politics in this area. I don't understand why people don't think about each other instead of big ideas and taking care of, oh, let's have the best. And this is the way that I look at it in some areas. I'm not mad. I just, I just want people to understand that we have lives. We pay high taxes where we live. We all know our taxes are very high where we live. And I just want you guys to work for us. I know you work for us, and I want you to make this better for us. This is our families you're talking about. This is our neighborhood that you're talking about. We care. We care about you guys, but we want you to care back. We want you to understand where we are coming from. And this is a very hard thing because I plan on raising my daughter here. I want her to be safe. I want her to be happy. And this is very, very difficult if a lot of foot traffic, a lot of people that we don't know that are going to be coming into these areas for retail. I don't understand why a gardening center would come in to where I live. If this is going to be housing for students, why would they need a gardening center, first of all? They're not going to be taking care of any gardening. I just don't understand some of the philosophy of, I just don't understand. I want it to be about family. I bought a family home in a family residential area. Like I say, I don't mind that some things come in, but nothing on Race Street. Don't take away the trees. It's gorgeous if you drive down the streets. It's absolutely beautiful. My daughter will never, ever understand it if you guys took it down and could never see it. I just don't understand. I am a 38-year-old woman that thinks it's absolutely gorgeous there, and I want my daughter to learn the same thing. And I want you guys to care about us. We work really hard on making things look good in our area. And you guys just need to understand our hearts. We're not trying to be mean or bicker here or do anything wrong. If you guys were in our same situation, you would be fighting like we are, with our children at heart. I don't want people coming through my neighborhood that shouldn't be in my neighborhood. I don't want that at all, and I hope you guys will protect us and keep us safe and just pay attention to what they're trying to put there. Don't let anything come on Race. Please, that, if you're going to do anything, just keep Race free. Free of any opening there. Do it on the other end, because we all know, from Race Street to First Street, they are planning to put restaurants in there by the university employees' credit union, all that's supposed to be hotels, restaurants, all that stuff. We all know that. We all know how they took all the properties from all the farmers out by South Farms where they are now. I actually know a farmer that they took his house from. And I just don't want them to take it from us. They can't annex our land. We know that at this point, anyway. They can't take it from us because of their program where they can take family property. I don't know the name of it at this point. But I just, that's it. But I just want you guys, I'm not mad. I'm nervous to talk up here. I don't mean to come across rude or disrespectful, but I just really pray that you guys will pay attention to us, listen to us, because we're talking from our hearts. This is our hearts. We are paying the bills at our homes. We're paying the mortgages. And we're all very nervous that things are going to come in that we can't control, but you guys can help us control that. We need your help, and we just pray that y'all will help us and make things happen in a healthy way. Just make it healthy for all of us, not the university to be the biggest and the best. I work in Chicago. I love it here. I don't want a big city life. I love my home. I love my neighborhood, and I love my city. I just pray that you guys will work for us. Please, please work for us.
Next is Barb Peckham, 503 Evergreen Court on the subject of Orchard Downs.
I just want to read what was sent to me email from John Eisen at 103 West Holmes. "We do not want commercial development fronting on Race Street. We do not want an ice cream or ice arena encroaching on the Florida-Lincoln area, and we demand that the university treat us like neighbors, not simply as an inconvenience to be worked around." That's all I have to say.
This is Bob Watson, 113 Whitehall, says he does not choose to address the committee and asks that the plan on Orchard Downs be delayed until later. Want to say anything else, Bob? Okay.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, in June, the same thing? Okay, thank you. Kate McDowell, 2106 South Race, does not wish to speak but wants to be listed in support of the Greenway Plan for Race and the Comprehensive Plan. Meg Stevenson, also 2102 South Race, also does not wish to speak but wants to be...
Can I change my name?
Oh, well, sure. Come on up.
I certainly agree with what's been said, but I did want to make one more point. I want you all to get, as I speak, a visualization of Campus Town, of University Avenue around the Beckman, the Research Park that has yet to be developed, and the Campus Town around Cranert. These are the four areas, plus us, that are being thrown into the same pot. I think one of the things that seems to be in the mind of people on campus is to make us very similar to those areas, a thought which frankly turns my stomach. It really does. The other thing I'd like to just mention in passing is that no one has spoken about the university students who are in graduate housing over there. It seems to me they definitely enrich our neighborhood, and I know we enrich theirs. I'd like them to be a little bit closer to people than they'd be on Windsor Road. However, if we have to have retail, that should also be on Windsor Road. Thank you.
Next is Elaine Payden, 2112 South Race on Orchard Downs, does not wish to speak but wants to be listed in support of retaining the green space. Dale Stephenson, 2102 South Race.
Okay.
Okay, in support of the green space at Orchard Downs. Bill Bagby on, is Bill here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
He's a cheer up there I took down.
You want to let us know your address, so I can fill it in on your card here?
I was a resident of Urbana for about 18 years at 312 West Nevada. Recently, a year ago, I sold my house, and now I live in the northeast of, I live northeast of Urbana, not in northeast Urbana. And I'm here again. I'm sorry to take your time on this busy evening, but we have a problem. But you know who I am, where I live, but as probably many of you don't know, I own a business there which could benefit financially from an interstate exchange on a High Cross Road, and the many trucks that come and go from my facility could also save some drive time. If anyone should support new roads from a business perspective in my area, it should be me. But I don't. The reason I don't is much more important than the money that I would make or save. It quite simply would damage the already threatened wildlife that we share our everyday lives with. For this and many other reasons that are well-researched reasons that have already been presented to you, it is also bad for Urbana's future prosperity beyond the next few years' financial statements, and I cannot support it. This is not and should be not about money, but about respect for other life forms that we share this planet with. And to sacrifice these for some short-term regional business gain is ludicrous and in complete conflict with the other long-term goals in this plan. There are good reasons to pass this plan, and there's bad ones. To support or declare and incorporate lofty, smart growth goals in the plan is a good thing. To pass it because you're tired of dealing with it and all your friends you've worked with want you to pass it tonight is a bad reason to pass it. To pass it in its present form, where the implementation of these goals are in conflict with the goals themselves, basically reduces it to a bunch of rhetoric. This is a plan that, despite the time in the making, it has not fulfilled its own goals, and it should not be passed in this form. And in light of all of the other conflicts and problems that have been brought forward tonight, I respectfully submit that you allow it to be reviewed by the new council and the new mayor, who will have to work with it and make a decision tonight and leave this for a later date, rather than leave this as some bad legacy to haunt the new administration that will have to implement it with all of its contradictions.
Next is Tom Rouchfuss of 306 West Nevada, does not wish to speak but is opposed to development of green space on Race Street and opposed to opening BUC to more apartments and frat houses. Okay, and next is Steve Vaughn, 2003 Burleson on Orchard Downs.
Hi. I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I'm an organizer for the Illinois Education Association, and I bring that up because, for two reasons. One, I think about bargaining a lot as a union. We're kind of constantly engaged in stuff like this. And when I looked at the Comprehensive Plan and I looked at what was happening in my neighborhood with Orchard Downs, I was confused as to why the opening position of the city should be that this area, which currently is residential, should be commercial, that there be a commercial element there at all. Because once we take that step, then the debate becomes, well, what sort of commercial stuff is going to go in there? We've already given away the idea that no commercial stuff go in there at all. And that strikes me as not a very wise first move from a bargaining perspective. The second reason why I bring up what I do for a living is that I'm very cognizant of the need for the city to raise tax dollars, especially in the form of property taxes, because, of course, educational funding currently depends very much upon those sorts of tax dollars. I'm hopeful that something is going to change along those lines in the not-too-distant future and that educational funding will be rethought. But in the meanwhile, I recognize that that's a consideration that you guys have to take and put in place. I would warrant, however, that depending on the kind of housing that goes into what is arguably really beautiful land, you might make still a pretty good dollar in terms of property tax. And considering there, if it's going to be mixed, my guess is you could put much nicer residential places that people would be willing to pay a much higher dollar for. If there wasn't a commercial aspect to it than you would if there was a commercial What strikes me here is that the university is thinking about this in terms of, I can almost hear the slogan, Orchard Downs Lifestyle Center, beautiful place to shop, but you wouldn't want to live there. Our neighborhood would be the backdrop for people to come in and have this really wonderful shopping experience, where there's these quaint little homes across the street, and there's some trees left from when this was a really beautiful place. And it'll be a wonderful day that they'll have at Orchard Downs Lifestyle Center, and they'll go home with their bags full of merchandise, back to their place where there is no commercial district, left with the people who live in the area who don't have the same sort of neighborhood they had before this place went in. So I would encourage you to think about the language that currently already accepts that this be a commercial... that this be a commercial venue before you approve the master plan. Thanks very much.[604.66][604.66](APPLAUSE).
Next is C.H. Nelson, 2108 Grange, does not wish to speak but does not want retail in Orchard Downs and supports the amendment to keep green space along Ray Street. Next is Susan Tichner, 11 Montclair, and I guess in support of the green space on Orchard Downs and limiting, in opposition to commercial development at Orchard Downs. Next is Amy and Uriel Kitron, 201 East Mumford.
They're my neighbors. They asked me to read this to you. They're attending a university function. Please do not approve the Comprehensive Plan until we can learn more about what the university intends to do in Orchard Downs and how this development will benefit the city of Urbana. We do not want to lose the green space in Orchard Downs, nor do we want businesses along Ray Street. We have enough paved lots and closed stores less than one mile away, both to the east and to the north. The city of Urbana cannot afford to sacrifice the successful neighborhood and one of the green areas of this tree city, USA, for quote-unquote "tax benefits" that are unlikely to materialize. No plan should go before the university trustees without authentic input from the neighbors and the city, unlike last spring's bogus process when our views were ignored by university consultants, and their report, which we are told has been set aside, was released only after intense pressure from neighbors repeatedly requesting to see it. The university's history in removing the trees from the orchard behind the president's house and the university's attempt to eliminate a line-eye grove, an attempt that was thwarted thanks to community protest, set precedents that make us suspicious. A proactive and well-informed move by our city is required. Sincerely, Amy Aidman and Uriel Kitron, 201 East Mumford Drive, Urbana.[745.12][745.12](APPLAUSE).
Next is Mary Ellen Dorner, 102 West Holmes.
Passed, but I support the green space.
Okay, supports the green space. Next, J.F. Ziff, 104 West Holmes.
Passed, but I support the green space.
Supports the green space at Orchard Downs. Next, Robert Francis of 16 Montclair. Yes, sir.
I support the amendment that you proposed.
Okay, supports the amendment for green space at Orchard Downs. Teresa Michelson, 2013 Silver Court. Teresa?
Why do you think I would be on the line to speak?
Oh, okay. In favor of the amendment for Orchard Downs, the green space. Bill Miller and Julia Kelman of 114 West Florida.
We don't want to speak, but we support the green space. It makes us suspicious business technologies. We need to support it, and if we will, it's been said possible.
Okay, thank you. Supports the green space amendment. Pauline Mack, 2206 South Race.
I don't wish to speak, but I support the green space.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Gabuski, I'm pronouncing that right, 107 West George Huff Drive, does not wish to speak but wants to preserve the footpath and green space from Florida to Windsor in the Orchard Downs area.
Excuse me, I wasn't intending to speak, but after 32 years of living in the country, I would love it to remain green, no commercial property, maybe nice new houses for students who are most important. Without students, there's nothing here, really. It's not a nice little shop, because when we were in this guy...
If you have something to say, if you'd come up and speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
I'll finish now.
Okay.[881.22][881.22](LAUGHTER). All right. All right. Thank you. Next is Sandra Bales, 21 Montclair, on Orchard Downs. Sandy Bales? She's not here right now? Next is Joyce Ferris of 2508 North Cottonwood. Joyce here?
Members of the Urbana City Council.
And you.
Members of the Urbana City Council and everyone here tonight, good evening. My name is Joyce Ferris. My husband and I have lived at 2508 North Cottonwood Road for nearly 43 years. It was the best choice because our small farm and the surrounding countryside offered everything that was important to us. We care about the wooded areas, the wildlife, the farmland, and the peaceful open spaces, away from the daily rat race of city living. Been there, done that. We also care about our neighbors who share these views and have worked together so well to preserve our neighborhood. When we first learned of the Illinois 130 High Cross Road Corridor Study about a year ago, a group of us got together to draft a petition reflecting the concerns of the residents of this northeast Urbana area, and we have shared it along with the signatures of 302 residents, with every committee and agency involved in making decisions that would affect not only us, but those who follow and live on this land and those who live elsewhere in this community. We also feel obligated to speak for the thousands of residents who have no voice in what happens to their homes or environment, who are unable to sign petitions, and who must depend on us to act responsibly on their behalf. They represent many species, from small to large, and concern for their welfare was included in our nine-point petition. Nothing has changed from the time the petition was written, and we stand firmly behind every single word. In past meetings, we have asked why these proposed roadways were needed. What is the real justification for destroying an area for the sake of just building more roads? No justifiable reasons were ever given, but finally, at the February 17 meeting, one of the committee members offered an explanation based on pure speculation and anticipation of outward growth in this area. Census statistics have shown no growth in this area for more than two decades, and this is the information from the United States Census Bureau. 1970, 6.0% change for Urbana, 1981%, 1990, 0.0%. And we don't have, of course, we're getting into the 2000 here, that would be for that year. There is not substantial growth in that area to warrant the type of roads, systems that they were talking about proposing. The city of Urbana has said it is committed to developing infill. We have pointed out many times that existing roadways are serving their purpose very well, and we do not need more of them. None of us has the capability to look as far as 20 years into the future and know for certain what the next generations will need. There is only one who knows what is going to happen that many years in advance, and none of us can speak for him. We can only decide on the lesser matters in the more immediate future, and it is our obligation to do what we know is right. We hope that you are as committed to honoring the tenets written in your Comprehensive Plan as we are to protecting our area as a green belt, and that you declare no build for the proposed roadways and the corridor between High Cross and Cottonwood Roads. Thank you for your time.[1200.58][1200.58](APPLAUSE).
Next is Bjork Holte of 1001 North High Cross Road on the comp plan. Nor here? Bjork?
Good evening. My name is Bjork Holte, and I live at the 1001 North High Cross Road. I would like to talk briefly about two meetings I attended in 2004. The first meeting was on June 1st with two IDOT representatives and a few other residents of northeast Urbana. Since both represented IDOT District 5, our district, we wanted to ask them some pointed questions about future roads. One of the questions I asked was, who is driving the initiative of the access road, also called the trumpet extension, from the University Avenue interchange exit 185 to High Cross Road? I was told by these two IDOT representatives that the access road trumpet extension was a request from the city of Urbana. The Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, does not build roads unless there is a request from the city. On September 21st, 2004, there was another meeting held at TK Wendell's and open to the public. There were approximately 100 people attending that meeting. The topic was Illinois 130 High Cross Road Corridor Study. The agenda was presentations from the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, the city of Urbana, and the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. Again, I asked who was driving the initiative of the access road trumpet extension from University Avenue I-74 to High Cross Road. After some hesitation, the answer was that the city had requested this initiative. It is clear from these meetings that IDOT is not the initiator. It is the city of Urbana. We, the northeast Urbana residents, have been actively working with the city of Urbana and QATs to make our views known. We have expressed strong opposition to the access road. We now ask these questions. Who is the city of Urbana? Is it only a handful of powerful people? Do these few people want to impose their own vision in spite of what the public wants? In our state of Illinois, Chicago's forest preserves, lakefront, and multiple city parks have set an example for the whole nation. The members of the Urbana City Council with a new Comprehensive Plan must have vision for our own city and county. Urbana has been known as a progressive and environmentally responsible community. We are counting on your wisdom and integrity to preserve the last vestige of big growth and protect green spaces. Thank you.
Next is George Boyd, Row Route 2, Urbana, on the comp plan. George?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is George Boyd. I live in the county northeast of Urbana. I want to thank the mayor for the comfortable chair he allocated to me tonight. It's better than I've ever had. I agree with everything that's been said tonight by everyone regarding Orchard Downs, the Meadows, the whole thing. And one of the things that I've observed in sitting over there tonight is this: what are the people that are in favor of all these changes? I don't hear anyone in favor of these things. The entire purpose of government in this country is to preserve the civil rights of the people and to serve and protect them. That's the purpose of government, and that's the way I think it should be operating. I think you should be listening to the people, and I'm not hearing people that are saying, gee, we should do all these things. We have submitted to you over a period of time, and the Planning Commission, and before that, the Steering Committee, and before that, QATs, as others have stated from our area, petitions and various other materials stating that we do not want any new roads. We still want the proposed extension road from I-74 University Avenue to be eliminated from the plans as it serves no purpose. We've given you maps demonstrating this fact, and we continue to oppose that or any other new roads in that area. And I don't want to just keep beating on a dead horse, but I hope that all of you, as responsible members of a city government, hear what we're saying and will act accordingly. I agree with Bill Bagby. I think that perhaps the best thing would be to put this forth to a new, already-elected council and let them deal with it, because you're going to be gone shortly, most of you, and they're going to be faced with living with this for a long period of time, as are the citizens, you know, for a very long period of time. So that's all I really have to say, and thank you.
Well, that's all the cards I had. Did I miss anyone or anybody? Oh, a couple more here. Oh, I'm sorry. Next is Georgia Morgan of 804 West Nevada.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to go on record in support of the change to remove the designation of the Bucy Avenue area as a study area so that it is represented just as R2 residential, the same as the areas to the east of it, as it was designated in the Downtown to Campus Plan 10 or 15 years ago. It hasn't changed since then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Julie Watkins, 805 East Green.
Hello. I've been coming to these meetings and been very interested to see how this progresses. And I had a thought, so I decided I wanted to say it. The first time I came to speak at one of these meetings, I came to speak on another matter, but there was a whole room full of people who didn't want the Walmart to go up where it was going and didn't want you to sign the final thing that you had to sign. And I remember Ms. Chinna was saying, sometimes I hate my job because she, they had to sign because the zoning was that way. The people had bought the particular land, and they had this by right. So when I was thinking about everything I learned, listening to that, it seems to me that the problem with that thing was when the zoning was changed. And I think the reason why you have so many people here is that they learned something from that. They don't want the zoning to change. And I don't know, I haven't researched this, so I don't know if the university, if they can do whatever this, if they own the land, if they can do this or that by right. But if they need you to change the zoning, I don't think maybe you're not ready to pass this if there's a lot of people who are saying that they want you to wait or they don't see the reasons for. And I also have seen the example since I've been coming here and observing is that when the church wanted a variance, it wasn't really a little variance, it was a big zoning change, according to some people. according to some people. So I think that's why people are, the constituents here are telling you why they're feeling very strongly. And someone in the future can ask a variance if the thing has got through. So that's my observation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
I just want to let...
If you want to, please come, if you want to come up and use the microphone and state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Heather Stevenson, and I just want the citizens that are here, that are wondering about the new council, that many of us that will be on the new council are here tonight, listening to your concerns, and I want you to be encouraged by that.
Thank you. Would you state your name and address, please?
115 North Market, Champaign. I have been out there saving the souls of railroad beds that are being invaded by adjacent owners. I want this plan to include something more about rail trails and railroading and those sorts of things. I don't see it in this plan. I think, I want to see you relating to other villages and towns around you in a corridor and a regional planning effect. And that doesn't just mean regional planning, it means Urbana in relation to other cities and other communities. And I think if you don't include that sort of item in your plan, I think you're going to lose the potential for the best part of 100 miles of rail trail. You don't have it downstate geographically. It's possible that you can match what goes on in the north of Route 80. It's time we had some action of that nature. I think you have to be very careful in this plan that you write in the future for interim trails and even rails if it has to come back in. Railroads are doing very well. I was just this week in Chicago area, and they're extending an interurban way out in the boondocks and also doing a lot with freight. So I appreciate what you're doing. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Last chance. Okay, petitions and communications from council members. Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Regarding the discussion for the comprehensive plan, I asked Laura Ferrex and Paul Faraci from the Illinois Department of Community and Economic Opportunities to come, and they're here so that when council members or if council members have questions, especially regarding the High Cross Road and I-74 interchange, they, I think, can help answer questions regarding state funding and state issues, questions, or concerns regarding that. Thank you.
Okay, well, then we'll move on to reports of standing committees, since there's no old business. One item left on the report from the committee of the whole. Ms. Wyman, I think you're still the chair.
That is item C1A, ordinance number 2005-03-050, an ordinance adopting the city of Urbana comprehensive plan 2005. That was, well, part of the meeting that was continued from last week.
Okay. Mr. Kwalski, do you have anything to present before we dive into discussion and other amendments?
Just briefly, you did get a memo on March 28th that outlined the two outstanding issues that were left on the table at council. One was the issue of preserving rail corridors. I think Mr. Alex will have a proposal for that tonight. The other one was changes to the Western Urbana maps, number eight and nine. And in your packet from the end of March, there was proposed changes to maps eight and nine that I think addressed all of councilperson's concerns. The map inadvertently still left the reference to further studying Lincoln-Bucy corridor under Point 2, and that is proposed to be struck from the maps. So those were the two items left on the table. I just want to reiterate for Orchard Downs, there hasn't really been any new developments since the last time we discussed Orchard Downs issues. There's nothing new to report. Just, I know you know this already, but for the sake of anybody that may be tuning in for the first time, again, city staff and the city council did not participate in these market studies that the university commissioned from private consultants, so we didn't have any participation in those. And the comp plan does not call for a lifestyle center or any kind of significant retail development at that site. And it does call for the Orchard Downs site or the whole 160 acres with a future land use designation of mixed residential. And there are some bullet points that explain what should be considered when cooperatively master planning this site with the university and the public. So we still feel that the plan adequately sets the stage for the next step, which we'll be getting into more detail about, the Orchard Downs site. And I understand you have some additional suggestions for that as well. But just to reiterate that, we don't have any new information for you on that, really. For the High Cross Road corridor, again, we can discuss that tonight, and I know you may have some questions. I think, you know, the maps, the goals and objectives have really evolved quite a bit and have been revised quite a bit since we started this process four years ago. We were looking at, you know, one alternative or, you know, one thought of where improved access to the interchange should be. That has evolved on the mobility map to considering multiple points of interchange access when looking at that issue and taking more issues into consideration. Of course, you made a lot of changes to language at your last meeting that strengthened the goals of preserving the rural residential character of the High Cross Road corridor north of the interstate. And there have been a lot of changes in the collector-level road, system of roadways that we've proposed in the area that is all contingent on development and not, you know, progressively building new roads, but that natural features also be given more consideration when considering building public roads. So I'll stop there, and if there's any, you know, specific questions about funding, as Ruth already mentioned, we represent us from the state here, and Bill Gray can help us quite a bit, too, so.
Okay, as far as process is concerned, we do have the changes that were approved from the committee meeting, and there's several pages of those. That's pages one, two, three, four, and five of the approved revisions, March 29, 2005. So Ms. Wyman, I assume your motion incorporated those changes?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have unresolved revisions, March 29, 2005. And those are things that if we want to include in the comprehensive plan, we should act on tonight or before the comprehensive plan is passed in its final form. And there may be others as well. Any questions for staff at this point, Ms. Pat?
I had a question for Mr. Gray, but I see Ms. Chinna fits her hand up. Did you have a question for Mr. Kwalski while he's in the chair? I'll yield.
Yes, Ms. Chinna.
Just a question that came up in public input that I think, I just want clarification on. It's my understanding that the current zoning of Orchard Downs is institutional. Is that correct?
The current zoning, I think part of it is actually agricultural on the south. Lydia's got the map here.
I think we fixed, I think it's all uniform now.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is Conservation, Recreation, and Education, CRE, which is similar to our institutional zoning district, yes.
And the rest of the university areas, the more institutional areas are also CRE?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the, the map, okay, the constraints on CRE zoning are what currently? What are the, what are the things that can't exist in CRE zoning?
Mostly, it's designed mostly for institutional uses, open space, public uses, civic uses, along that nature. It does not, the current zoning does not allow for commercial uses or any kind of, you know, residential uses beyond maybe something extremely low density. But really, no. No residential or commercial uses in CRE.
So before the, and what's before is the comprehensive plan is not, is not a zoning change, it's talking about different uses in the area. So the city council and with the veto power of the mayor could, would have to actually make a decision to rezone that area per the university's request to allow commercial in that, in Orchard Downs.
Yeah, if the property is, you know, privately developed, even if the university does maintain ownership of the land, similar to Gregory Place and East Campus, we would expect that, you know, would fully meet zoning requirements, which in this case would require a change in zoning to be able to accommodate whatever a master plan might show with a mix of residential uses, et cetera.
Thanks, that's helpful.
If I could ask a follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
My understanding is that, and I think this is just worthy of clarification because there's so many people here who are concerned about this. In the past, it's been the university's stated opinion, although this has never been tested in court, that they are not subject to the provisions of the Urbana zoning ordinance with regard to land that is owned by the university. But my understanding is that there is an agreement between the city and the university that where land is university-owned but privately developed under the terms of a land lease, such as we saw with Gregory Place, that the developer, the university basically does agree to bind the developer to the city process and to be bound by the provision of the zoning ordinance. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kwalski? Ms. Pat, did you have a question for Mr. Gray?
Yes, although my question's about, about the High Cross corridor. Do we want to, do you want to divide this up topically and deal with Orchard Downs and then move on?
Well, we can. I mean, what I would suggest is if we take a look at, oh, yeah, the unresolved revisions, March 29, 2005, maybe one of the first things we could do is deal with your proposal from, what was it, a couple of weeks ago, with the page 81, page 82, and page 90, the future land use maps for West Urbana and removing the text about the study of that particular area. Do you have any objection to dealing with that first?
No, I'd be happy to. If you can get out of the way.
Okay. Well, if, does anybody need a recap of that? Does everyone have that pretty well in mind?
These are the unresolved concerns.
Yeah, this is the unresolved concern that was listed in the, the March 29, this particular document here. Do you have that?
For some reason, I don't, I don't have it.
Mayor said, I have a substitute motion, because it was a motion on the floor that I have, that I circulated everyone's desk. I don't know if you all saw it.
Yeah.
And Mr. Kwalski already said it's hard. If you would just allow me to make that and explain it, I can recap it pretty quickly.
Well, hold on, I need to...
It says comprehensive plan changes regarding the weakened Bucy.
Got it.
Yeah, that's it. Okay.
Okay.
If I may substitute this for the motion that was postponed to this point because it got simplified, and that would be to move to amend the motion to replace maps number eight and nine with the new versions that are included in the packet, to remove item number two on both maps that says further study Lincoln-Bucy corridor to determine appropriate land uses. Third would be on page 90, this was part of the original motion, to remove the strategy studying zoning and land use along the Lincoln Avenue-Bucy corridor from Illinois Street South to Ohio Street to determine appropriate future land use destinations and appropriate opportunities for adaptive reuse and redevelopment. So be removing that. And the fourth part is to remove the, page 106, Appendix A. That is no longer needed because on the revised maps eight and nine, the inset is basically what we saw on Appendix A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion about that? Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
I don't know what we want to tackle next. Mr. Alex, a lot of people are here for the Orchard Downs thing. Do you want to go with your...
Actually, I'd like to raise the other issue of outstanding business we have, which was the rail.
Okay.
The right-of-way amendment. With the approval of the second, who I believe was Ms. Wyman, I would like to withdraw my earlier motion and substitute what I believe is a more simple motion that I think gets more to the heart of the matter. That would be to, on page 19, under the rail and air subject, add, delete the word "remaining" in the following sentence. It currently says rail freight travels along the Norfolk Southern Line and serves two remaining industrial uses in Urbana, Emulcote and Solocup. I would like to strike the word "remaining," believing that we're not sending the right signal to our valued industrial neighbors by describing them as remaining uses. And under Goal 27, which is ensure adequate transportation facilities for new growth, I would like to add a new objective, which would be numbered 50.4, and that is promote efforts to preserve abandoned rail corridors through rail banking. Some background, I proposed an amendment originally which was intended to offer support for the continuing operations of the Norfolk Southern Railway in Urbana, and in the event that those operations were to cease, the preservation of that rail corridor. And I presented that amendment more for the purposes of discussion, and such discussion has taken place with a member of the Park District Board and some of the city staff. And I'm pleased to say that I think we've achieved a pretty good outcome here. I think there is agreement between the, among the city staff that this issue of a downtown-to-carl trail might be achievable even with the railroad continuing to operate as opposed to something that would replace the railroad. And I think that's a very positive outcome, and I hope that the city will aggressively pursue that. Obviously, the railroad is still in operation. We hope they remain in operation for some time, and it would be a shame to have to wait 20 or 30 years for that, if ever, for that trail to be available as amenity. But the real purpose behind this amendment is something that I was very glad to see Mr. Monk speak to earlier, and that's this notion of rail banking. There has been a historic conversion over the last 40 years of railroad right-of-way from railroad use to private land. And of course, these rail corridors originally connected major cities and smaller towns and have in intervening years since railroads have ceased to operate, become amenities for running telecommunications lines and becoming recreational trails and a large number of other public amenities. But of course, what they really are is also future potential railroads. And one thing that those who are familiar with the railroad industry are aware of is that demand for freight rail is increasing greatly as oil prices continue to rise. This is becoming a means of transportation that's efficient for moving freight for large classes of industries, which may not have considered it in the past. And I think this opportunity to convert, this opportunity, or the need to preserve these rail corridors is something that led the federal government to support something called rail banking. And this is where conservation groups are given the opportunity to purchase railroads when they cease operation and turn them into recreational trails, subject to the understanding that if they ever are needed for railroad use, again, there's the opportunity to repurchase. And I think this is one of the, maybe the rarest circumstances in which the federal government has created a eminently sensible policy that works for everyone. So I think it's in the best interest of the city to encourage this. One related issue is that a number of years ago in the 90s, we had an opportunity to preserve the former Wabash right-of-way, which ran from downtown Urbana southeast to Sydney. And at that time, there was considerable controversy over whether this should be preserved, whether it should revert to the original landowners and so forth. And I think things like that happened in communities all over the, all over the country. And that's what led to the strengthening of this rail banking legislation. And so, you know, my feeling is that railroads are something that are worthy of support, that once these corridors are lost, they're lost forever. And I second the efforts of groups like Mr. Monk's to ensure that we preserve these corridors for future generations, and that's the spirit behind this amendment. I would ask for your support.
Okay, you want to take these together or...
No, I'd prefer to advance this one.
Well, I mean, these two...
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'd like to move this as a unit.
Okay. So there's the motion.
Second.
We have the second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Well, at first I was wondering about this, this motion and the railroad use. And it occurs to me that in the Eastern Urbana area, there is a whole swath of, that had once been a rail line and the rails have taken up. And it goes through, if rail banking had been a feature and an option or had been followed through at the time that that line was taken up, it could have become a wonderful bike or walking pedestrian connection between this southern corner of the city and the downtown. And that's no longer possible because the land has all been reverted to individual owners along the route. And I often think that was a missed opportunity. So preserving them and having this option now and thinking of the future of Urbana and possible pathways and bikeways has my support.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Alex, do you...
Yes, my next amendment relates to the Orchard Downs track. And this amendment... And this amendment reads as follows. I'm going to read the amendment, and then I have some comments I'd like to make about it. First, to the bullet points, as we're calling them, that were added by the Plan Commission to future land use map number 12, which is page 85, those were added in Plan Case 1923 CP05. I'd like to add the following bullet point. Retaining, and this is, to give context, this is the sort of set of objectives that are to be considered in the city's cooperation with the university over the planning of this track. Retaining existing greenways along the length of Race Street and Florida Avenue, including multi-use paths and mature trees. Also, on the map itself, to add designation "existing greenway" in text the same size as the Race Street notation, with arrows at each end parallel to the street. This is intended to convey the recognition that there is an existing greenway in that location without being specific as to width. Finally, to the implementation strategy for Orchard Downs on page 98, I'd like to add references to the following goals and objectives. 1.0, which is preserve residential neighborhoods. 1.4, which is promoting residential in established neighborhoods close to campus. 2.0, which is encouraging compatible development in established neighborhoods. 2.1, which is encouraging compatibility with the built fabric of neighborhoods. 2.4, which encourages development to be of high quality and aesthetically pleasing. 9.3, which encourages the creation of parks within walking distance of neighborhoods. 10.1, which encourages a system of trails and greenways. 11.1, which emphasizes open spaces in new residential and mixed-use developments. And 25.1, which discusses new commercial uses convenient to existing neighborhoods.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Alex, do you want to speak to it?
Yes, specifically to the amendment, "greenway" is defined in other city and county plans as "green space set aside for recreation or conservation," and describes an open space amenity without implying park district involvement. And I think that's a fair description of what we currently have along the south side of Florida Avenue and along the west side of Race Street. Greenways are specifically promoted elsewhere in the plan, and the amended map notation recognizes the presence of these existing greenways along Race and Florida, and the bullet point calls for their inclusion in any Orchard Downs plan. Additional citations better place the city's role in Orchard Downs redevelopment in context with the remainder of the comprehensive plan. The university has indicated that it opposes new comprehensive plan provisions which limit its flexibility in planning the site. I respect that argument to the extent that I would believe it would be unreasonable for the city, for example, to expect the university to preemptively devote a large portion of the parcel to park use, or to call for a specific mix of uses or a specific street layout. Nevertheless, I believe that the existing greenway and path along Race Street and the existing greenway and proposed path along Florida Avenue are of sufficient importance and so consistent with other objectives in the plan that city endorsement of these amenities is appropriate at the comprehensive plan level. I further believe that the only limitation placed on the university by this amendment is to avoid direct commercial frontage or residential driveway connections onto Race Street or Florida Avenue. For various obvious reasons, I believe that these types of development would be inappropriate anyway and are at odds with other provisions of the plan. This amendment recognizes the need to preserve existing amenities and the character of adjacent streets without limiting the ability of the university to connect to these streets, provided such connections are done appropriately as street intersections rather than driveways or parking lot curb cuts. I encourage the council to support this amendment. I have a few other comments I'd like to make, I guess, while I have the floor, with regard to the Orchard Downs discussion in general. First is, I'm pleased to see that South Urbana can fill the council chamber as well as West Urbana has historically done in the past, so thank you. I've gotten a lot of comments on this, and they've clearly primarily been the result of very little communication going on between the neighbors and the city and the university. And I'd like to advance a theory as to why that's the case, and I think there's far less insidiousness here than there just is, the fact that this is very, in the very early stages. We have not seen a site plan. As far as I know, there is no development agreement. There is no, basically, anything firm about what it is that the university plans to do here. There are some vague comments about development that will definitely include residential, but that might or might not include a retail and/or an office component. And the first, I think, real indication that we're going to have of what the university's vision for this site is, if indeed they choose to communicate it at that time, will be this public meeting on the 19th at the Urbana Civic Center, where the university will show up with something. Now, whether it's a site plan or a set of site plans, or whether it's a preliminary flow chart describing a process for creating, a process for listing input, which is usually how these things work, we don't know. But the, I just want to stress that I think that the reason that we haven't heard much about the university's plans is probably less that they're trying to keep them secret than that they don't, you know, that we don't, they haven't finalized anything yet, or they probably haven't even finalized alternatives yet. I think one thing that this is not likely to be is the Orchard Downs Lifestyle Center, and I'm pleased to announce that, since I live in the neighborhood too. But I should say something about consultants. I am a consultant, and I'm not a consultant in the same industry, but it's a sort of a sad fact of consulting that it's difficult often to communicate to a consultant what it is that you really want to know. And so, when you go and ask for one of these studies, and Jones, Land, and Sals are respected firm and so forth, but when they come back with something that says, you know, "We think you ought to have a Lifestyle Center," I think that's one of these times where you say, you know, "Oh, well, maybe we ought to find another consultant." I think, without wanting to put words in the university's mouth, I doubt that they've gone and talked to Nordstrom's and Roman Board and the other prospective tenants for this Lifestyle Center, because I don't think it's probably likely that there's a market there for that. There were comments earlier about bargaining and about, you know, what is the city's bargaining position, you know, and why are we basically giving away the store before we even start to talk to them? And I think I disagree with those, with that attitude, because I think it's in the interest of both the city and the university to come up with a creative way to redevelop this site that will benefit the city and will benefit the university and will benefit the neighborhood, and I think it's possible. One of the comments that I heard was that we think that the university ought to treat us like neighbors. And I absolutely, I think that's a terrific comment, and I really appreciate it. But I think we have to recognize that that has to work both ways. And, you know, with some of the emails I've gotten this week and some of the exchanges I've had, you know, most of which have been very reasonable, but there seems to be this undercurrent that, you know, the university thinks the neighborhood is going to march on the President's House unless we get 160-acre field full of puppies and flowers. And I think the neighborhood thinks the university wants 160 acres of a steel mill surrounded by strip clubs. And I think, you know, probably the reality is somewhere in between, and I think probably more toward the end of what we'd like to see than toward the end of what we maybe are in our wildest fears, think that they might want to see. I don't feel that it's entirely inappropriate to consider a development at the Orchard Downs site that is primarily residential, but that does incorporate a retail component or an office component. I think creating the old farm shops, the full length of, or probably any length of Race Street, would clearly be inappropriate and would not represent a good faith effort by the university to work with the neighborhood. But at the same time, I think saying that a coffee shop at the corner of George Huff and Orchard is going to destroy the fabric of the neighborhood is probably equally unlikely. What I would encourage everybody to do, I've gotten some comments about asking us that we postpone the comp plan, and the undercurrent I've sensed there is that we ought to postpone the comp plan so that we can sort of tailor it to fight the university, you know, whatever it is the university wants to bring to this site. And I think, I don't think we should postpone the comprehensive plan until after this presentation on the 19th. And the reason for that is simple. The comprehensive plan is supposed to be a long-term planning document, and it's supposed to be something that we can turn to, or future councils, future plan commissions can turn to, and say, "This is what we think the vision of the city is. This is what we think." These are the things that we can all agree on. And I think the comprehensive plan, there's been disagreement even here tonight over, you know, we should have no commercial, we should have, we could have a little commercial, maybe it wouldn't be so bad. I think that the comprehensive plan as it sits now, in describing a process by which the city is going to work with the university, and in communicating something by virtue of adding this amendment, which says, "Look, we think that there are ways in which commercial development might be appropriate, but lining Race Street and Florida Avenue with commercial uses isn't it." I think we are communicating to the university parameters within which we think that they ought to work while still giving them the flexibility to decide what they want to do and giving them the opportunity to surprise us with something good. I think we need to be concerned, we need to approach this in good faith, we need to treat the university like neighbors as we expect them to treat us. I think, quite frankly, it's reasonable of us to expect the university to be as reasonable as we are. And I would like to see that when we go into this meeting on the 19th and to subsequent meetings, and when the city staff works with the university, that they have this kind of guidance, and that they can go to the university and say, "We believe that what you're proposing is compatible with the comprehensive plan or is not compatible with the comprehensive plan, and hear why." And do that based on a comprehensive plan that was passed in 2005, and not a comprehensive plan that was passed 20 years ago. So I think for that reason, it's important that we go on record as saying, "This is, these are what we think are the important parameters. These are the things that we can all agree on as a community." And then we work forward. There are going to be a lot of opportunities to see this again. I have no idea what the university's planning on proposing on the 19th, if indeed they are going to start talking about site plans. But I think after this meeting, they're going to be, probably going to be considering very carefully what it is that they present, knowing that there's going to be considerable attention and considerable interest paid by a lot of concerned neighbors. And I think we have to be reasonable, I think we have to encourage the city staff to work with the university in a framework of cooperation. And I would ask that the council will support this amendment, and I would ask that the people in Wardstown and the surrounding areas come out on the 19th and hear what the university has to say. Be in touch with the members of the new council. Lynn Barnes is here in the audience, and I've been copying her on a lot of the mail I've been sending out, and I know she has a strong interest in what's going on. She'll of course be sitting in this seat in about three weeks. And I would encourage you to, you know, keep in touch with Diane Marlin and her efforts to establish a Southeast Urbana neighborhood group, because that's a good way to keep track of what's going on. And I am not, at this point, afraid of what the university's planning to do. I'd say I'm concerned, but I'm still willing to hear what their suggestions are, and I would encourage everybody else to do the same. And if we need to fight this, we can fight it, and there's something to fight. But I'm still hoping that the university will be sensitive to the needs of the surrounding neighborhood as they plan this track.
Any other discussion on this channel?
I support the amendment. A couple of points. One is, I've asked staff to actually try to get a tape of the public input from this evening to the university, so that they get a chance to see the entire piece of public input that we have seen today, and they have agreed to do that. Also, Mr. Alex, I think it would be useful for the listening audience, as well as our audience here, if you could just read all of the bullet points that will be attached to the map on top of Orchard Downs, so that people understand that the bullet point that you're proposing is one of a list of bullet points that kind of provide a framework to the university in terms of constraints they would like to, we would like them to consider when thinking about development at Orchard Downs.
You're going to have to let me do some searching here, unless Steph has a copy of those handles.
Yes, I can read if you'd like.
Steph, room, thank you.
On map 12, replace the annotated language on the Orchard Downs site with the following. Coordinate with the university on long-range master planning for the Orchard Downs track as a planned development. Master planning should address the following: relationship and compatibility of new development to surrounding areas, a mix of residential densities that include both single-family and multifamily, the scale and extent of potential supporting neighborhood businesses, and provisions for community open space and links to open space amenities. That's what the council agreed to the last meeting.
And so, Mr. Alex's is in addition to that list.
Right.
Any other discussion on this amendment? Yes, Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I agree with it wholeheartedly, and I won't repeat everything that Ms. Alex just said. But I do want to emphasize to folks, and I'm not sure everyone understands this, that no zoning is changed by adoption of this plan. I think that's probably one of the biggest misconceptions, just what I've read into the emails I've been receiving, that anything, whether we're talking about Orchard Downs or actually anywhere else in the plan, anything that changes still has to come back to city council in the form of a plan case to change the zoning on land, if the land's already zoned for the purpose. Also, I don't, maybe it seems like a funny thing to say now, but if folks don't realize, the comprehensive plan is not setting anything in stone for 20 years. It is a plan to, for what we envisioned for 20 years, but it is a living document. I took office when the last comprehensive plan was 12 years old, and in my first year in office, we made changes to the comprehensive plan, and changes had actually already been made before I took office, and I don't even know how many amendments to the comprehensive plan we voted on in the first few years I was on city council. So as things change in the city, as plans get more specific, the city council can, and I'm sure will, change this plan. And I just say that in response to the request some people had, that we wait and let the new council vote on this. I'll bet the new council will be voting on things related to this. We're just pulling together the work of the last four years to get the document down, so we have it. And finally, I think the most important thing to emphasize to the university, and I certainly understand why so many people showed up tonight after I read Saturday's News Gazette, and I had not actually seen anything yet ever or heard anything specifically proposing commercial properties fronting on Race Street. I mean, it almost sounded like they were, their response to our suggestion of, I made the mistake evidently of calling the greenway a linear park. Linear park actually is a concept, but that, I guess, confused people about the Park District. I just meant keep green space all up and down Race Street to Windsor. And I think the most important thing that the city needs to do, and this will be the next mayor and council, is to communicate to the university that whatever the development plan is there, it absolutely has to have, not only saving the trees, but significant green space and that multipurpose path all the way down Race Street, and significant green space and saving the trees on Florida. And frankly, I can't imagine how any intelligent person could design this, any redevelopment in this area, and not see the value to the people who will live in the new development of those amenities, of the green space, and the multipurpose path, and the greenway. So I support this, and I know that most of the new councils are sitting in the room or watching on TV, and I know that they, many of them, if not all of them, agree that this is a priority too. And I think you can be confident that the city will be pushing for that with the university in the redevelopment.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Roberts?
Well, I've only been on council for about three and a half months, and I have not observed completely the long and incredible journey that the planning staff and the city council members have taken to evolve and kind of refine the comprehensive plan. I think it is an incredible document of hope, vision, and insight into what we think is going to be our future. And I was kidding here a while ago and saying I felt like the city council was like the fly on the nose of the tiger. The planning commission has already done four years of work, and at the last second, the fly is there buzzing away at the, irritatingly, you know, trying to make these little tiny corrections, because there's probably an erroneous fear that if we don't get it exactly worded perfectly at this moment, we're done for, that there'll be a big, there'll be a terrible error occur, and we'll all fall into a pit. But I don't believe that's true, and I think that indeed, like I said, this is a living document. There's ample time to have other amendments and corrections to it as the new council takes seat. And I think that it behooves the city to kind of like celebrate the culmination of this planning process and put this into motion. And the details that are coming out in some wording is important, and, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I took some time to add amendments that I felt were important for my background, for my ward, which were readily adopted and agreed to by the city by voice vote. So I appreciate the time to fine-tune and do some things on an individual basis. But it seems to me that pretty much we have found a way of solving most of the difficulties that were brought up in some kind of way, which provides us with a clearer and somewhat more refined view of some of the choices we have on the land use maps, for example. So I actually celebrate the fact that this could be coming, a culmination right now.
Any other discussion? We're, the item before us right now is the amendment to add Mr. Alex's language with regard to greenways along the Race Street and Florida Avenue, and the additional goals to be added in the Orchard Downs section on page 98. Any other discussion on that? Yes, Mr. Alex?
I just realized, as being remiss in not acknowledging the efforts of Esther Pat and others on the council in terms of putting this amendment together, I appreciate it. It's her original language, and we've made some changes to it, and obviously run it by a lot of people in Wardstown in the intervening time, but appreciate the effort.
Okay, any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of this matter, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. The table's open for other. Thanks, all of you for coming out tonight for that. Yes, Ms. Wyman?
I passed out to council members a memo, one-page memo dated April 11th. It's an update from the memo I emailed out to everyone dated April 10th. So I thought I'd just start with those. Maybe it's easiest to start with number two, which is other comprehensive plan issues. And if you'll just note that... And if you'll just note that those that I'm, those that are in bold and underlined and/or capitalized, bold, underlined, are my additions. So I should start with page 52 of the comprehensive plan. Goals and objectives, service and infrastructure. Goal 42.0 states promote accessibility in residential, commercial, and public locations for disabled residents, and I'd like to add objective 42.1, point one, I believe. Is that right?
Yeah, well, 42.1, so should they develop the comprehensive?
Okay. Sorry. So, and the addition that I've got is adding objective 42.1.1 that says, ensure that there are accessible ramps for all new sidewalks at intersections with roadways. I'll make several of these, several of these, this other one as well in the motion, adding objective 42.6, ensure that people with disabilities have access to the city sidewalks by installing accessible ramps where requested by people with disabilities, their advocates, or in heavily pedestrian-trafficed areas. I so move.
Second. We have a motion of second. Any discussion?
Just speaking to the motion, if I may. I think that the city has had a concern, council's had a concern with making sure that, again, we have more accessibility for people with disabilities or who have mobility impairments, and again, this just adds to and promotes that goal of better accessibility and mobility, not only between residents in houses, but in the neighborhoods as well. And so these two objectives just add on to the objectives and the goal already stated.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Alex?
Two things real quick. First, I appreciate the amendment to support the object, to qualify our support for the COATs long-range transportation plan by incurring, by limiting it to the extent that it's consistent with the Urbana Comprehensive Plan. That's something we did as a motion when we endorsed the COATs plan, and I think that's good, because it indicates that the, for the purposes of the City of Urbana, we expect that the staff and councils to look toward the Urbana Comprehensive Plan as the permanent planning document with respect to the COATs plan. And my other comment was about signage, 44.7, signage with regard to High Cross Road. I've heard a number of comments about this, and I think this is something that it could be argued that to some extent, before we do any studies of that area, improved signage may considerably improve the situation out there now, and may change the results of such a study in terms of people's perceptions about how accessible High Cross Road is from the existing University Avenue interchange, if we have some decent signage, so I fully support that as well.
Okay. What's on the table in this motion is just the changes on page 52. Any other discussion on those changes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Wyman, did you want to continue with?
Yes, looking on against, to page 54 now, of the comprehensive plan, on item 44.6, or goal number 44.6, that currently states promote new technologies and designs in construction improvements at crosswalks. I'd like to add to that, including accessible ramps and signaling for the visually impaired. I so move.
Second. We have a motion of second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, just adding another point, and it should be, I'm sorry, 44.8, as we already have a 44.7, just to improve intersection markings and signage near and around High Cross Road. I appreciate Mr. Alex already expressing his support for that, and I just think, you know, we're, again, this is an issue, already is starting to address issues of High Cross Road, which I plan to discuss later, but as this was on page 54, I just wanted to add that as well.
Okay, we have a motion of second.
I second it.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Ms. Wyman?
I have two other amendments. One I'd like to, I think, is without controversy or concern, and that is on page 105. It's an issue, I think Mr. Alex mentioned we've already discussed this issue. I think it was accidentally left out. I want to make sure that it's included, and I was contacted by your Colton and several other people to make sure that it got in, and so wanted to include it. On page 105, the implementation strategies, the second strategy listed, and Mr. Kowalski included this in his memo dated end of March, I believe, it's, currently states, support and implement the goals and objectives of the long-range transportation plan developed by COATs as it pertains to the City of Urbana. I would like that stricken, and in its place stated, when evaluating transportation projects, support the goals and objectives of the long-range transportation plan developed by COATs to the extent that they are consistent with the Urbana Comprehensive Plan. I so, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any discussion on that one? Yes, Mr. Alex?
I apologize, Ms. Wyman. I was addressing my discussion to the things you were about to make. I was confused as to how these fit together, so didn't mean to dig your thunder.
Okay, any other discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Wyman, do you have one more?
I do have one more, and I actually don't know, council members have questions or concerns about this. It deals with High Cross Road. I'll make the motion, request a second, and then I know that Laura Ferrex, Paul Feracci are here, and Rob Kowalski, and Dr. Tyler, and Bill Gray are also here to answer questions or concerns. And that is dealing with page 75 of the future land use map, number two, from Plan Commission as it was amended and stated in Mr. Kowalski's March 31 memo. Currently, the language states, or starts out stating, improve interstate interchange access at High Cross Road, Cottonwood Road, or 1800 East to serve growth south of the interstate. Future study, and this is what I'd like to insert, shall take into consideration the intent of the city and its comprehensive plan, that the sector north of I-74 and east of Brownfield Road, as shown on map number two, be quote-unquote rural residential, and the city should protect this neighborhood as an option that is particularly appropriate in this terrain, and only after such consideration, and then allow, the language that's already stated there, will determine an appropriate location. I so move.
Second. Here, we have a motion of a second. Is there any discussion? Did you want to hear from Laura and Paul?
I think perhaps at this point, it makes sense to ask Mr. Feracci or Ms. Ferrex to come up and speak to it. Council members have been privy to some discussion, though I'm not sure how much or how, to what extent, regarding information about state funding and federal funding that might come across for I-74 interchanges, and I know Ms. Ferrex has communicated with Mr. Walden, and at least one of those emails got forwarded to us, and so I'm wondering if, Ms. Ferrex, you could talk about how the funding comes about, and especially to the extent that mention or inclusion of High Cross Road is necessary to make sure there is funding, state or federal funding for the I-74 interchange or interchange possibilities.
Yes, and I cannot really make that many formal comments at this time regarding state funding, as it has not been secured, it's been requested, and it's something that we'll consider, along with your comments from this evening and the comprehensive plan, when considering future transportation needs in this area. We did speak with IDOT about this issue to try to gauge their impressions about any potential future state funding, which could be for addressing preliminary engineering work, that we would look to the state to perhaps provide some support. Any project that would involve a new interchange location on Interstate 74 would require federal approval from a transportation perspective. It is IDOT's experience, as they've expressed to us, that the more options that are able to be considered within the preliminary engineering phase, planning work, the better chance that transportation funding might come on a federal level. So they urged that we look at, that the City of Urbana look at several options, and especially given the traffic on High Cross Road, at least take that into consideration in preliminary planning phase, if that addresses what you were asking.
Any questions of Ms. Ferrex? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
We talk about High Cross Road being a potential interchange, and I guess you wouldn't really be privy to answer this particularly, but since we have a University Avenue interchange, basically at the same location, are you saying that, the wording is not talking about a University Avenue development, or possible correction or reconstruction, so we're talking about a brand-new, significantly different interchange? Is that my impression in this development, or what?
The, what's referred to as the intersection, or the interchange at High Cross Road is an extension of the University Avenue exit.
It would be this trumpet, well, or some kind of development of?
So basically, the University Avenue one is half of an interchange, and it's the proposal to, for the High Cross interchange would be to add the other half.
To connect it to High Cross in some way?
Right.
Okay, so I was wondering.
To connect that existing intersection with High Cross Road in some fashion.
It's never been the intent in the plan or in the discussions that the existing interchange would go away, and a new diamond interchange at High Cross Road would be built. That hasn't really been part of our discussion.
Well, I didn't think it was.
Right. But I can understand the confusion of the wording a little bit, but.
Any other questions, Ms. Channell?
There's been a lot of discussion about this, this particular interchange, and I guess after, based on the information I have so far, I do not support an interchange at High Cross Road for the economic development purposes and transportation purposes of the City of Urbana. I do, however, support access to the interstate east of Urbana. And so what my understanding is, is that as the comprehensive plan is currently written with the kind of three options, it allows us to seek funding from the state to study access east of Urbana, even if it, the kind of preferred alternative, local preferred alternative, is not High Cross Road. Is that correct? Is it correct that basically in having three options for access east of Urbana, we have the best possible chance of securing funding for an access study east, in East Urbana, even if the locally preferred alternative is not High Cross Road?
I guess we don't want to make that decision for you, and that is part of your comprehensive plan discussion, so if it's not something that you believe is something you want to put forward as an option, given dual representation of the City of Urbana, that's certainly within what I would expect your role to be in commenting on this proposal. Nothing has moved forward on the state level as of yet, it's only been a request, so we certainly look at your input on this and make a decision from there. The comments that we received from IDOT, and I don't represent IDOT, so I will not make, really speak on their behalf, just what they've passed along to our agency, is that it would be wise, when working with the federal government, to consider High Cross Road as part of that initial phase engineering study because of the existing traffic along 130, that it would probably come up as a question, even if that ultimately was not where the interchange was proposed, that there should be some assessment of why not that area.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Wyman?
I think in your, one of your, or the letter, the correspondence that we afforded, there was discussion about industrial sightings, and of course, with the designation of the former industrial site where Walmart now is, is a commercial site, that leaves very little industrial sightings or location possibilities at High Cross Road. Is part of the, or one of the things that's looked at, not just industrial sightings, but also commercial for an interchange, or I guess, doesn't make as much sense to me why High Cross Road would have to be included if industrial sightings or industrial locations were the only thing that the state, or were an important part of the state's consideration, if we don't have those potentials there.
I think DCEO looked at it from both the perspective of commercial and industrial potential.
Okay.
And transit considerations, and would continue to take your direction of how you see it fit to be zoned. If there's another location, Cottonwood or another area, that were more suitable to your needs to be zoned for industrial, we would take that into consideration as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Any, let's see, we have, did you have questions for?
I have a question for Mr. Gray, actually.
Oh, okay.
There seems to be some confusion, and it might be between these two things, but about the, what's being studied now, and I was wondering if you can just sum up for the people in the audience, or for council members, about the High Cross corridor study. When did the city request this? When did it start? Who's doing it? When are we expecting it to be completed? And how, and is there still an opportunity to provide input into it, and how do we do that?
The High Cross Road corridor study was a request that the city asked COATs staff to apply for an Illinois-Tomorrow grant. I think it's a 90-10 funding split, and it's a $150,000 grant, and we received notice of that grant in fall or summer of 2003, and the city then employed COATs staff to perform this corridor planning. The planning limits are at the south end, Old Church Road, at the north end was Ford Harris Road. The parties to the grant include IDOT, Champaign County, the township, the city, and other governmental agencies, park and school district reps and that sort of thing, and county planning. The study got underway in, like I said, fall of '03, and initial phases included information gathering, existing conditions gathering. There was, I think, two public information meetings. There was discussion this evening about a September TK Wendell's meeting. That was actually a meeting in response to and part of that corridor study. But staff has looked at a variety of issues to date, as far as, what are environmental issues, what are encroachments, access issues, safety issues, and looked at existing traffic, and looked at, is looking at future traffic, what will be or what is the population in the area, what might be the projected population or growth or development in the area, and those sorts of questions. Where staff did come up with an existing conditions report, and that's available probably even on their website, I believe, and now they were beginning to get into the recommendation stages, or four or five alternatives as to what could be future scenarios, when the comprehensive plan, not when, the comprehensive plan concurrently was going on as a study and a review by city staff and council members. Concurrent then was the long-range transportation plan by COATs going on at the same time, and then this study was going on at the same time, and quite frankly, it's very confusing for people to decipher and distinguish one study and one plan from another. So we asked COATs staff to stop work on this Illinois 130 High Cross Road corridor study, to wait for the LRTP to play out, and now potentially this evening for the comprehensive plan to play out, and then it was our intention to contact COATs staff and resume where we picked up. There are still future public meetings to be held as part of the process. I can't tell you when it would be concluded, but I would say it's probably every bit of six more months or so before it'd be concluded, the Illinois 130 High Cross Road corridor study, so I think I've answered most of your questions.
And if I just want to follow up, how would the decision that, actually, I guess we did incorporate, recommended by the planning commission, that we incorporated in the comprehensive plan to look at interstate access as, to look at three options for interstate access, one at High Cross, one at Cottonwood, one at 1800 East? How does that, and that's a change, basically, because that wasn't something that was happening before, is that right?
Yes, I mean, this study does not go into any. I mean, this study does not go into any in-depth aspect of the interchange itself. And again, it's like a half-mile corridor it's looking at, you know, quarter-mile either side of High Cross Road, if you will. So that's the limits. I mean, from Ford Harris down to Old Church. But the fact that we want to add in our comp plan to look at three interchanges, that's fine. I mean, that's, to me, that's not in conflict with what this study's trying to achieve.
Does it in any way change the study?
I don't see that it would change it. I mean, it certainly would be noted that the comp plan is looking at a study, or future study of three alternatives, but I don't, Rob, you can jump in here, but I don't see that as being, is it to change? Sure, it's new information, and that's fine. That's good. It's good information to have. But it doesn't devalue, if you will, the study that's underway.
I was wondering if it expanded it at all, or is looking at the option of there will be, there will be an enhanced interchange and there will not be, I mean, both of those options? Is that already part of the study of looking at High Cross? Is, in terms of this corridor study, is it both looking at what if there were and what if there weren't?
That's a good question. I guess that could be perhaps part of the alternative. You know, it's information, if it weren't to be expanded.
Yeah.
Then it means X, and if it were to be expanded, it means Y. I think that aspect would probably come out of the study. We haven't gotten to that point yet, but I think that's an aspect that would come out of the study. Sure.
I think Bill's right on that, and that's how they've described it to us, is how they'll look at the University Avenue interchange. The Route 130 corridor plan will not go as far over as Cottonwood and take an in-depth look at Cottonwood and an in-depth look at 1800 East and say, based on everything that's going on, 1800 East should be the place. It won't get in that kind of detail. And they've told us that early on, you know, that the scope of the project and the amount of money for the project will not include a, you know, full analysis of the three different interchange opportunities. That would have to be something that would have to come afterwards.
But I got the impression from a brief exchange, actually by email with John Dimmitt, that, that this study, the corridor study, is, in some way involves looking at High Cross and 130, both in terms of, no, presumption, but, but what if there were this additional connection, and what if it were not there? And that, and that's my understanding, is so that, so that the current study, as well as what we're doing with the plan, isn't presuming that we are in fact going to put in this trumpet that, and that the study that's underway now is looking at both options. I mean, not in terms of looking at whether or not to place it, but it's looking at the impact on that area if there were and if there were not. Is that, is that your understanding?
Yes. I mean, certainly with an expanded interchange and without impacts traffic volumes and origins and destinations where people want to go in the area, anywhere up and down the corridor. So that's important, and COAT staff would be looking at those aspects of travel patterns will be X, again, with an expanded interchange, and Y without it. And that has impacts up and down the corridor of High Cross Road.
Thank you.
Is there any other, any other questions? Yes, Mr. Alex.
I guess I don't like that answer. And the reason I don't like that answer is, I think we've got a conflict here between what I see as the goals of the High Cross Road corridor study and what we're proposing to put in the, what we're proposing to put in the Urbana Comprehensive Plan. The, one possible, pretend we were able to do without limitations based on prior agreement, we were able to do a study, which I think is really what's needed here, which is to do a study not only from the standpoint of this is a purely transportation decision of where this interchange needs to go, but let's talk about what we're really talking about here, which is how is this area going to grow? Because we know that wherever we decide to place interchanges, there's going to be growth. And in the absence of placing interchanges, growth is going to drive where we want to put interchanges. So I mean, I think what we're looking at from a, from a study standpoint, although we're calling it a corridor study, or we're calling it an interchange study, we're calling it a transportation study, what we're really looking at is a study that says, where do we want growth to happen out there? Do we want growth to happen along North High Cross Road? I think most of us have strong feelings about that. Do we want growth to happen east along 150? Do we want growth to happen south along 130? And I guess my concern is, it sounds like we have two contradictory goals here. We want to say, in the case of this interchange study, we're trying to be flexible and say, seven people at this table with a couple hours to spend on this are not going to come to a educated conclusion with regard to how a five-mile stretch east of Urbana is going to grow over the next 50 years. And for that purpose, we want to study potential locations for these interchanges, taking into account things like potential industrial sightings, commercial sightings, environmental protection, protection of existing neighborhood character, and all these things are, should factor into that decision about where we're going to locate that interchange. I think that's great, and I would hope that any study that we could do would not be focused on, we got to build this interchange because the Fed's dangling money in front of us, and we got to go take that money. I think we need to look at this as a, as a question of how the whole area is going to grow, and in that context, where these interchanges ought to be placed. My concern, and I promise there's a question I'm getting to. My concern is, it sounds to me like the High Cross Road study says anything a mile or half, more than a half a mile on either side of High Cross Road is uncharted territory. Or is it a quarter? How wide is the quarter? It's a mile-wide quarter or a half-mile-wide quarter in the study?
It's just the study area of.
How wide is the study area?
I think it's a.
It doesn't go to Cottonwood. It doesn't go.
No, it's probably a mile-wide.
Yeah, half-mile each side of the road.
Okay. So let's say, say for our assumption that that's true. There's only one of these potential interchange sites, if we even decide to make a potential interchange site, that's within that study. So I guess if you're, if we were to sit down in the absence of this interchange study and the High Cross Road corridor study was to conclude, gee, there's a lot of traffic on High Cross Road south of 130 that really wishes it could get to the interstate, that the only option that that study can, can yield as a solution is an interchange at High Cross Road, or a connection to the University Avenue interchange. And I don't understand how we can say that these two are compatible if the corridor study doesn't have the flexibility to say, we think a equally, and perhaps superior solution to allowing that traffic to get to the interstate would be University Avenue, Cottonwood, or 1800 East. Do you understand what I'm asking? I mean, how can we reconcile, how can we bring these two goals into harmony? This notion of basically saying, we potentially want to use an interchange out there someday to satisfy the requirements of growth in the High Cross Road, the South High Cross Road and East 150 area, in the context of a study that says we're only allowed to look half a mile on each side of High Cross Road?
I don't know if I can answer your question, but I guess this High Cross Road corridor study is not a study about whether or not there will be interchange at 130 and Interstate 74. Okay? That's not what it's all about. Okay? What, I think what you're requesting and asking, talking about has to do with, yeah, looking at three potential locations, and that would be a engineering study that potentially could be funded with OR money, as Ms. Ferricks was talking about this evening. That's where that answer comes about.
But I think what, what, as Pat was getting at, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I, I think the question is, isn't the outcome of the High Cross Road corridor study going to be fundamentally different if you presume there's going to be an interchange there, or if you don't?
And that's where you would have potentially different alternatives if yes or if no. I mean, that'd be good information to have at the conclusion.
Well, what I'm saying is, it doesn't sound like you have the flexibility to consider, no, but there's one two miles to the east.
Even, I think what he's saying is that there are different alternatives, so that you would suppose if the, you know, there's going to be, come in the study, if the, if you assume that the interchange is going to be at High Cross Road, then there are going to be an alternative saying, well, what if it's not there? It just, it doesn't change from the way it is, but there's an interchange at Cottonwood or 1800 East.
Well, I'm not sure the study permits that consideration to enter into it, though, based on the parameters of the High Cross Road corridor study. Or am I, am I being overly, overly?
Can I jump in?
I think.
I think, because I think, I'm sorry, because I started this getting complicated. My understanding was, if we were to say, just pull High Cross Road out right now, that, that would affect the study that's underway, because the study is looking at, at, you know, traffic patterns and whatnot, both if there were this, this enhanced interchange and if there were not. So my understanding is, right now, there, the COAT study is looking at, and it both ways, so it's actually looking at both options. It's not looking at Cottonwood, and it's not looking at 1800 East, but just looking at what would be with High Cross and 130 if there were this additional and if there were not. And so if what we want is the COAT study to have options, then we should leave it that way. If we pulled High Cross out, then that, that's what would change. If we, so basically, if we made a further change to comprehensive plan now, and we just said, we're not going to do anything at High Cross, leave that alone, that is what would actually change the COAT study because, because the COAT study was looking at both options. Now, that's my understanding. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's all I was trying to get at.
Okay. And I guess maybe I was, I was reaching a step farther in saying, how useful is the output of the COAT study if the two things it's going to study are, there's either going to be an interchange at High Cross Road or there's not? Because I think the argument that's been made all along in this is that there are equivalent solutions which would yield, one of which potentially being status quo, which would yield outcomes comparable to there being an interchange at High Cross Road, that being either, you know, improvement or better signage or something, a flow to the University Avenue interchange, or creation of an interchange at some unspecified point east. And I'm concerned that, you know, the COAT's plan is, is looking at presumably the utility of High Cross Road as a, as an east, eastern, or South High Cross Road as an eastern major artery. And that study's necessarily going to presume that some of that traffic is trying to get to the interstate. And we have, instead of saying, well, the choices are either the status quo or this extension to High Cross Road, which were two easily understood and easily studied alternatives, now we're adding these new things to the table, but it sounds like we're adding them to a part of the table that isn't, isn't available with the COAT study.
Well, I think that's some kind of narrow look at it, and the, the study can't take a look at if, the third option, which would be, there's no improvement to the High Cross Road interchange, but there is an improvement or a new interchange at some point east at Cottonwood or 1800. And what would that do to the traffic coming east on, or coming west on 150 into High Cross, into the High Cross Road area?
If that's true, it's great. Is that true?
We haven't, we haven't.
We haven't discussed that with the staff, so I can't answer that, so.
Everything on hold. As soon as we're finished with this comp plan, we'll get back together. I mean, the concept of the, of the Cottonwood and 1800 East is relatively new. You know, we brought it up the last, last month and a half, last two months. And I think that's a great question, that, you know, can we include in this study, you know, what if there is an interchange somewhere else?
And the reason I'm asking is, it's not an academic question. I mean, my, I apologize, this isn't quite a question, but I want to explain, so maybe you can elaborate on why, or understand why I want to know this and maybe answer the question better. My feeling is that, my, my argument in favor of leaving the star at High Cross Road is essentially as follows, that a study that doesn't take into account growth and impact on the entire area is not a good study. I think that a study of that area, based on my, you know, personal lay observation of the, looking at aerial photos and listening to the neighbors and looking at where people are trying to go out there, is that if you did have a study, it would probably come to the conclusion that High Cross Road wasn't the place that you want to put the interchange. But I still feel it's important to, to have that study, because if you don't, we're creating a false sense of security. We're saying, oh, there's never going to be interchange at High Cross. Then IDOT's going to turn around in front of some future council and say, well, no, you really ought to put an interchange at High Cross, and this is all going to be on the table again. So at least by encouraging these all to be included in a study and discounted, the bad ones discounted, we're at least creating realistic expectations as to what we know is going to be studied anyway, whether or not it's in the Urbana Comprehensive Plan. But the thing I'm concerned about is that if we have this corridor study, which we've sort of indirectly endorsed by virtue of the, or endorsement of the COAT's transportation plan, and that study is only allowed to come to the conclusion that, would it be better if there were interchange at High Cross Road or not, that this subsequent study, which I want to see done, about where would be the best place, if any, to put an interchange out there, could be, turn around and basically rest on this COAT study and say, well, we got these people together as a study group, and we told them, decide whether or not there ought to be an interchange out there, and the only place you're allowed to consider is a mile and either, or a half mile on either side of High Cross Road, of course, they're going to come to the conclusion there ought to be an interchange at High Cross Road. And so that's why I'm asking these questions, is to say, basically, are we, are we, how much are we risking by saying we want to leave that, that star there? I feel that an objective study would probably come to the right conclusion, but an objective study bolstered by input from a previous study that was constrained to only consider High Cross Road might lead future planners in the wrong direction. Does that, do you understand what I'm getting at? And can you allay my concerns or reinforce my, want to reinforce my fears?
We can try to, to get a little more out of the scope of the High Cross Road corridor study than was originally envisioned, you know, to the point possible. I mean, it's funded with a certain amount, and we've agreed to a scope of what we can do. Our conditions and our planning has changed in the comp plan, and it's one of the reasons we stopped. We wanted, let's finish this and see what kind of guidance it gives you, because we really wanted this to lead. And, you know, we'll take that back to the steering committee and try and see how we can work it in.
One more comment. I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm probably speaking out of turn, but I just, I guess what I'm asking is, I want to make sure that the, that the High Cross Road corridor study isn't effectively rigged to come to the conclusion that there ought to be an interchange at High Cross Road, and then have the, have the city council turn around and say, well, the reason we're, we're supporting leaving the star at High Cross Road is so it can be part of a fair study that's going to truly consider that on its merits. Because I think it would probably fail on its merits, but it might not if we were endorsing this previous study, which was only allowed to come to the conclusion that it, it was the only available option. And I'll leave it at that. But I just, I'm not, I guess I'm not asking you to go change the High Cross Road corridor study. I'm asking you to say what the likely implications of the, existing limitations on the High Cross Road study are to our decision here as to whether or not we should, we should take this off the table entirely.
Well, I guess the question is, is the High Cross Road or 130 corridor study have the constraint that you are fearful of? And I don't believe it does, or there's nothing in the, the parameters that say, you know, you must, if you're looking at an interchange at I-74, you must look at High Cross Road alone, you know? So I don't think that, that the process is, as you say, rigged, so that it would have to come to the conclusion that if there's going to be an interchange improvement, that it would have to be there.
So what part of consideration, a half mile on either side of High Cross Road, am I not understanding?
Well, the traffic has to come from somewhere.
Microphones, microphones, we can't hear you.
The traffic has to come from somewhere. And so if it's coming from Cottonwood or 1800 and coming east, or coming west on 150, then that changes the number of cars at that intersection with High Cross Road. So you have to take a, a look at a possible interchange there. It's going to change the, the traffic numbers. But I don't think that the High Cross Road corridor, I mean, we never go into something with blinders on and saying, oh, well, we can't take into consideration the discussion that happened here tonight, for instance. I mean, that just doesn't happen.
Maybe this will help clarify things. When they look at the current traffic volumes, you know, taking counts, et cetera, and look at future traffic volumes and where traffic is coming from, that's a more global look. It's not a half-mile either side of High Cross Road. It's the entire area, the whole community, actually. I mean, Rantoul down to 500. So if you're getting hung up on, you're only looking at a half-mile either side of High Cross Road, and whatever happens beyond that, we don't care, that isn't true. So the planning, the planners and the transportation engineers are looking at literally the whole region as to its growth, where jobs will be created, whatever information we have now or project, that's being factored into, you know, what will High Cross look like 20 years or 30 years from now, as best can, as that can be determined. So maybe that helps a little bit.
That's the answer I was looking for 10 minutes ago.
Okay. I'm sorry.
All right. No, I apologize. I'm not as familiar with the, with the corridor studies, perhaps I should be, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure whether the constraints were essentially, this was a narrow transportation in regard to, what should we do about High Cross Road?
This study literally is looking at travel patterns from 500 Homer, Sidney, on to Thomasboro and Rantoul and beyond. I mean.
And so one of, and one of the contingencies that could be considered in that plan would be whether or not an interchange were created east of, east of High Cross Road.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
And isn't it true that, I mean, the plan doesn't just concern how High Cross passes over I-74? I mean, isn't like a really major part of it is how it connects on the north side to possible Olympian Drive, you know, extensions and things like that? I mean, isn't that also like a major part of that plan consideration?
The interchange?
No, I'm talking about, that, doesn't the corridor plan on High Cross, I mean, isn't it also considering how, what might happen at the northern end of High Cross if Olympian Drive were connected to, you know, extended and other things? Is that also part of the nature of the, of the corridor study?
Yeah, I don't recall any aspect of that at all.
So you're saying it's not that?
Right now, what they would be looking at, okay, is the east-west movement along Airport, Ford Harris, those roads that currently exist. Okay.
I see.
Olympian Drive, the existing Olympian Drive.
Okay.
Ms. Chenoweth?
This has been a confusing conversation, not just today, but the last month and a half. I think that in my discussions with council, and I'm sorry to, to speak for you, but just, just to try to boil it down, I think that there is at least a majority, if not a consensus, that this council wants to consider, um, transportation and access issues in East Urbana, that we want additional study of this access, and that we do not consider High Cross Road to be the preferred alternative. Those three things seem to be true in talking to council members, and I'm not sure if we've actually embodied that, those three points in what we're talking about passing this evening. And so, that concerns me. I think that, you know, maybe we're, what we've been told at various times is, studying access requires, let me take that back, that studying access in East Urbana, it's highly advised that we consider High Cross Road as an alternative in this. I'm afraid that we'll pass a comprehensive plan, and that we won't be giving adequate direction to COATs, to, um, to our, to our access study, to IDOT, et cetera, if we aren't clear about, um, kind of what our preferred alternatives are. So, I guess that's, that's not a proposal, but it is a concern to put on the table at this point.
Further discussion, Ms. Wyman?
Simply in response to Ms. Chenoweth's concern that she just raised, I'm happy to make any, to propose or to, to consider any amendment to what I suggested in, in this item number one on this April 11th memo. The reasoning, the reason that I put in these clarifications or these concerns about the High Cross Road interchange that I didn't express regarding Cottonwood or 1800 East was to, to express that, that there are these other conditions, these extra conditions, if the city or the state is to, anyone is to consider High Cross Road or an intersection there, that they wouldn't have to or need to consider when looking at the Cottonwood Road or the 1800 East area. And that is, again, to look at the, the special sensitivity of the rural residential neighborhood that's, that's already expressly placed in our comprehensive plan. We've already passed that, we've already, that's already written into the plan. And it also includes in this language I'm proposing, protecting the neighborhood as an option that is particularly appropriate regarding the terrain. And then after the, such consideration of these special issues with High Cross Road or with the, the rural residential characteristic of, just, uh, north of I-74 and east of Brownfield Road, would or should the city then consider the various potential interchanges? It's something I saw as a compromise or a way to reach between meeting the, the needs that, that I understand from Ms. Ferrex and, and the memos that have, and the discussions that have taken place regarding making sure we get funding if we're going to continue studying this, but also making it clear that, that council is quite concerned that when High Cross Road is to be considered, or if it is to be, as it's being considered, that it, that it merits special consideration or special concern because of, of the special sensitivity of that area that I believe 1800 East and Cottonwood Road do not have. But if, if there's other language that, that should be put in here at this time, or after the High Cross Road, the COATs, the, the study that was put on hold comes back into play, I'm not sure what timing, but I'm happy to consider other timing. This was just something I threw out in trying to reach this, this sort of consensus or compromise, I suppose, depending on your point of view.
Okay, any other discussion on this amendment? If there's no other, yes, Mr. Alex?
Um, I just, I think I would speak to what Ms. Chenoweth said. I think we are actually creating a pretty good situation here, which is basically we're saying, look, we think there ought to be, we think, we recognize, even if we're not saying we think there ought to be interchange there now, which we're really not saying, we're saying that we recognize that in the future, there's going to be a need for additional kind of activity at the interstate out there, that it ought to go somewhere in this area. And as, as far as I'm concerned, whether we do three stars, or whether we do like a fuzzy line all the way along the interstate for those two miles, we're essentially communicating the same thing, which is that we think that there needs to be consideration given to whether and where and when there ought to be an interchange out there. I think that the comprehensive plan has already done a pretty good job of indicating that we believe that there's a big difference between High Cross Road south of the interstate and High Cross Road north of the interstate, which is something that the COAT's longer than transportation plan doesn't do very well. And I think we've taken steps to adjust our qualifier endorsement of the COAT's plan, and qualifier endorsement of the COAT's plan in this document, and include language that really indicates that we do see a difference there, that we've created this rural residential designation, and we, you know, have indicated that we, we will stand behind that. I would have concerns about eliminating the High Cross Road from the study, and again, it's, I would probably expect the study to come to a, the conclusion that that is not the most cost-effective place, even if it were just to a certain sense, to put the interchange based on the fact that we already have a interchange a half a mile west of there, which in terms of travel distance is, has been shown by some of the residents out there pretty comparable in terms of, of what the High Cross Road extension of that interchange would, would get us. I've looked at whether it'd be possible to do that interchange extension in a way that only connected to, to South High Cross Road, even looking at to the extent of completely disconnecting north and south High Cross Road, and it's just from a, from a standpoint, without a lot of land acquisition, it's just not likely to be real feasible to do that. So, my, I'm pretty confident that, that that area ought to be included in a study, because I think that we need to look at the overall patterns of growth in the area. And just like I don't like the fact that, like I was concerned about the corridor study saying, well, we, you know, we're maybe constraining ourselves too geographically, I'd be concerned about doing the same thing, that if we left High Cross Road out of the study area, that we wouldn't be doing a study that took into account these very things that we're trying to look at, which is impact on North High Cross Road and on this, this Brownfield Road area. So, I guess I feel like we're actually giving pretty good guidance, that we're saying, we believe that this is an appropriate area, region for an interchange to be located in, but at the same time, we're indicating the parameters that we expect such a study to operate under, and the things that we expect that study to take into account that we think is important. So, I guess I'm not as, as concerned. I respect your point of view, but I think we've actually done a pretty good job in the last couple of weeks of, of making it very clear what we, what we want.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Mr. Hayes?
I think we've done an extensive job trying to come up with this comprehensive plan, and been a lot of hard work put into it, but we still have questions, and so, you know, as we look at what business and industry is, is doing now, you know, they, they go through a process, but, you know, directly, they're not really concerned about the process, they're worried about the outcome. Okay? And so, things do change, and so my question to you, Mr. Colossus, you know, the fact that the council's taken on this awesome, you know, responsibility to try to make decisions now, and not pass them on to the next council, that the new council has something to go with. And so my question is, you know, given the facts, that, you know, the way life is at this particular time, there's also always a possibility, when we, when we get some new information, to change the plan, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, this is a point I want to get about.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, this is the amendment Ms. Wyman has on the High Cross Road issue. Further discussion on that? There's no other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Any other amendments, changes to comp plan? Okay, well, the main motions are for us. Any discussion? Okay, well, if there's no further discussion, will a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Alex?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with six ayes, and before we adjourn, I'd just like to thank our staff for the, and everybody that's been following the process.
Spun in blood.
Yes, right. So, thanks for the persistence, everybody involved, because I think we've got a good document that'll serve the city well for many years ahead. So, thanks. And with that, this meeting that started last Monday stands adjourned, and will be being as the committee of the whole in just a few minutes. There's been a request for a five-minute recess.